Good evening. We're calling the July 9th, Kittle Hills Board of Commissioners meeting to order. If we would all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now call in a moment of silence, please, before we begin our meeting. Thank you. First on the agenda is agenda approval. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Same as mayor.
Second, mayor.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is the time set aside for public comment. Do we have anyone that's signed up this evening? Okay. If anyone does wish to speak this evening at public comment, we certainly welcome you to do so. We do ask if you're speaking as an individual to limit your comments to three minutes, or if you're speaking on behalf of a group, please limit your comments to five minutes. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at public comment this evening? Yes, Mr. Lowak.
Good evening. Mike Lowak, 106, Port Hole Court. My first comment, only comment, is more of an observation, and it has to do with the site at the old pet gallery that they've torn down, and now appears to be 12, maybe 14-foot of fill on that property. And I know Greg's not here, so he'd probably be the one that would know the most about it, but are they planning on building a building on top of that 14-foot pile? That's all.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll address it after, but Meredith can speak to that, and we'll address it after public comment, but thank you.
Thank you.
It's okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is response to public comment. And Meredith, you'll respond, please.
They have put quite a bit of fill at the pet gallery site, which is going to be the site for the Auto Zone. They're using a type of compaction called a surcharge method, which they use the forces of gravity to compact their soil. The elevation of the site is going to be about 13 feet, and that is about the exact same elevation as Walgreens. They've put in right now about 22 feet of fill. They're going to let it compact naturally using gravity for the next two to three weeks, and then they will pull off the top five to eight feet of fill and level the site for construction. So they're using a different method for compaction than you're probably used to seeing, but that's how, so a lot of that fill's not going to be on the site when it's done. And they do have stormwater measures that they're going to be building in place that 'll hold all the stormwater for a 10-year, two-hour storm, which is 4.3 inches. Water's going to be mostly reservoired in the back of the building away from the strip mall next door. There'll be a small retention pond on the north side by the strip mall, and that retention pond's actually going to take a lot of the stormwater that currently is not held at the strip mall and hold it on the Auto Zone site. So it is going to be considerably lower, and their stormwater will be retained on-site They said it's going to probably be another two and a half weeks before they level it out, because that's what's required for the compaction that they're looking for for that site.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll move right into new business. First item under new business is resolution in opposition to Dominion North Carolina power rate increase. And I will introduce this agenda item. We have the resolution in our packet, and we'll have it up here on the screen for you Some of you may recall receiving a letter in the mail notifying of a potential 20% rate increase, and that this is going before, it's kind of in the hearing stage, and I know we have a local hearing set on September the, let's see, September the 6th in Manio at 7:00 PM. And this came up also at our budget discussion at the last meeting, and concerns just in the economic times that we're in right now, that a 20% rate increase would create an economic hardship for many. And staff has worked together to put this resolution together. And the resolution is not opposing a rate increase altogether. It's just requesting that the rate increase that Dominion Power looks at, to look at doing something that would not be as much of an economic hardship, for them to really look and see if they can find a happy medium, with trying to limit the amount of increase at this time, but yet meet the needs that they have as a company. So I would like to introduce this evening. Michael Thompson is here with NC Dominion Power, and it's right here in the front.
Madam Mayor, question?
Thank you for being here, and he is available if we have any questions, or if there is any items that we need to address.
I do have a couple of questions. Michael, if you've got a moment. Yes, sir. Do you want me to go to the podium? Please.
Please.
Yes, Commissioner Bruski.
Michael, when y'all put the new budget together, that was when fuel prices probably were at their peak. Have y'all looked at this increase since fuel prices have dropped? And I know last year y'all had proposed a higher increase than what wound up really being pushed through. Do you anticipate that same thing happening again this year with fuel prices dropping and that 20% drop? Because I think last year y'all had, I don't remember what y'all proposed, but it was like 14%, 15%, and it only wound up being like 7% or 8%. Do you anticipate that same thing happening again this year?
Very good question, Commissioner. If I may digress a few years with you, if I could, please. Every year Dominion has a fuel filing with North Carolina Utilities Commission. Dominion does not earn on the fuel filing. It's whatever fuel is used to generate electricity for our customers. So three, two years ago, in 2010, Dominion had a net increase of 5.1% decrease. That was because we got a 2.9% increase in base rates for the first time in 17 years that we had applied, and we had a offset of 8% decrease because of decreased or diminished fuel costs that the company incurred. The next year, as you aptly mentioned, we did come in for a larger increase, and we did settle at approximately 9%, which was effective January 1st of this year. The current filing will be August 8th of this year, and we do anticipate, as you all have realized, in the last October to April timeframe, a warmer-than-average year. Dominion will take what costs we have overcharged, if in fact we have, any costs we've undercharged, which we probably have not, and then what we expect to be in the future for the next 12 months, and come up with a fuel factor. As the mayor aptly pointed out, that in our application, we indicated that the 20% increase would be partially offset or mitigated by a fuel decrease. This time, we do not know exactly what it is, but we will on August 8th.
If I put you on the spot, and I know this is a tough question, and you're not going to want to answer it, what do you think the increase is actually going to be if you had to guess today?
Well, actually, I don't mind answering it all. We do have a document that we filed with Gail Mount, the Deputy Clerk of North Carolina Utilities Commission. She is the principal clerk, and it indicates, "We anticipate that adjustments to our fuel cost recovery provisions will offset this increase to a significant degree, resulting in a net change on November 1st, 2012 of about 15%." So we're talking probably in the neighborhood of 5% or 6% commissioner.
5% or 6%?
Negative fuel factor increase, which would offset the 19% or 20%, somewhere around 14% or 15%.
Do you think that number can possibly drop even lower?
That would be speculative on my part, and I don't think I'd like to answer that.
That's, I say, that's a tough question.
Anything is possible, Commissioner. Probably, I don't know.
How about the heat this summer? I mean, we had a relatively mild June, but we're getting toasted in July and probably August. Because fuel prices are down, but now they're saying they're going back up. We had an oversupply of fuel, so the prices were going down, and all of a sudden, we have a record July 4th of people traveling, and now prices are going back up.
Well, again, it would be hard for me to speculate, but I will share with you that in the most recent storm, Friday a week ago, Saturday and Sunday, Dominion lost 1 million customers that were out of service. We finally got them back on through Sunday. Of that, about 6,000 were impacted in North Carolina, not a huge amount, and I kept crossing my fingers and knocking on wood, but in Jackson, North Carolina, it was catastrophic. The entire town was taken down. It is such a small town that we're able to bring them back up in one day. The fuel costs associated with what we've had so far this summer and what we anticipate for the rest of the summer and the next 12 months, which our filing will be based on, would include this extreme weather, if you will. But however, I don't believe that it will seriously impact or significantly impact what I just quoted you, about 5% to 6% negative increase for fuel.
Michael, just out of curiosity, when you do have a catastrophic event, and not talking about like hurricanes that we have down here, because we've been fortunate with hurricanes, we haven't been without power for very long, except Hatteras Island, which y'all don't cover, but during that storm nine or 10 days ago, that took down a lot of customers. And I don't know how many of those customers were y'all's, but when you get a situation like that that happens in Dominion's area, does that factor into your increases due to lost income, or do y'all look at that when you put your budgets together, or do you look at that as just a part of doing business?
We look at that very closely. In fact, you'll find that there is a figure in the filing that we have for the Hurricane Irene that we sustained. We also had another significant impact in our North Anna Nuclear Power Station, August 23rd last year, where an earthquake chose as its epicenter our nuclear power plant. We shut down for three months. There are lowest-cost fuel supply electricity generated, and hence, we had to purchase and interchange, is what we call it, from other companies to make up the difference. Now, you may say, okay, Michael, that's in Virginia. We don't want to talk about Virginia, because we're down here in North Carolina. That's absolutely correct, but you will find, Commissioner and Madam Mayor, that in North Carolina, we have three generation plants: Roanoke Rapids Hydro Facility, Gaston Hydro Facility, and Panda Rosemary, which is a small combined-cycle plant in Roanoke Rapids. In no way do any of the aggregate of these three facilities make up for the entire electrical needs of the 21 counties or 120,000 retail customers we have in North Carolina. So that's the long answer, and the short answer is that we take the generation that we have in the other part of our electric grid, and we allocate through a cost allocation process approximately 5% to North Carolina, and that is imported into North Carolina to meet the rest of the needs of our customers.
So I guess the short answer to a different question would be North Anna being down for three months is part of the factor for this rate increase.
If you wanted to extrapolate that conversation a little bit further, Commissioner, and we had not had North Anna go down for three months, which is two generation plants up there, and looked at the 5%, then it is entirely probable that that negative fuel factor filing that we're going to have August 8th would have been even more negative.
Right.
But we are subject to the same harsh elements that many of the residents are as well: the winds, the salt, et cetera.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we all realize there are a lot of things out of y'all's control, and y'all are a business, and as we all know, especially myself being in business for myself, nothing goes down, everything goes up. We haven't seen decreases in anything in our business in years. Well, that's wrong. Material costs are down, but insurance, fuel, all that stuff never comes down, so...
Well, Madam Mayor, as the Commissioner has brought to light a couple of things, if my may, share a few things with the board and with the assembled residents here. What I will quote from you is, in the filing that we had with North Carolina Utilities Commissioner, I went out and looked at three neighboring cooperatives and three neighboring municipalities, and also two of our competitors, Bestroon Utilities, Duke and Progress, that recently merged about a week and a half ago, as well as the East Coast and the United States of America, how we stand here. With the exception of Duke and Progress, which both have their filings that will be coming up later this year, Dominion is the lowest. Dominion, with the rate increase of 20%, if approved at that level, would charge $119 per 1,000 kilowatt-hours, which is the bellwether or the standard that we use in the industry to compare each other against. And if I'll go right up the line, if you don't mind, Roanoke EMC and Roanoke Rapids, that same $1,000 would be $122.72. The United States average is $125. Apple Mall EMC, which is just south and west of Elizabeth City, is $130.39. Title and EMC, just across the bridge in Mann's Harbor, is $132.97. Elizabeth City, which is a municipality under Electric Cities, is $133.42. The East Coast average, which we're in, is $139.02. Now, keep in mind, the first figure I gave you is 119, so that's about $20 higher than Dominion with the proposed increase. I'll mention four more. Rocky Mount EMC, $140. Edington, just across the sound, $141.11. Washington, North Carolina, by far not the smallest, because they're 35 in the United States, and it is the original Washington, is $145.83. And Halifax EMC, up near Roanoke Rapids, is $146.35. So you can see that we're very fortunate, I feel, to have a company that provides safer, reliable, and affordable electricity, and that we are a community partner with the philanthropy as well as the relationships that we have with the different towns that we serve here in the Outer Banks. Thank you for that moment.
Thank you, Michael. And I would like to add to that. Michael, for those of you who don't know, he's a Dear County resident, lives just north here in our county, so he is a member of our community. And it might seem like it's dated, but if you think back last year in Irene, and how many compliments we heard about the work that NC Dominion Power did to restore people's power, and bringing this resolution before the board for approval, it is to try to, and I will read the last paragraph in a moment, because I think that really sums it up. It's really trying to reach a happy medium, if at all possible, to understand the plight that our citizens are going through in these tough economic times, and also respect the work that you do. And certainly, none of us would not want you to be there when we need you to be there. So if you guys don't mind, I'll read the last paragraph, and then I would appreciate if a motion would be in order. So be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Kittle Hills respectfully requests that North Carolina Attorney General Roy Cooper and the Consumer Protection Division intervene on behalf of Dominion's northeast North Carolina customer base to find an equitable solution that will help Dominion North Carolina Power meet its needs and not impose such a weighted liability on citizens of our region. Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion or questions for Michael?
Yeah, I would like to just say one thing, that I understand the need for a lot of different things that we deal with today, that the rates have to go up, and it's nice to hear that it may not end up being that 20%, but I think in approving this, if we do approve this resolution, I think it's our duty to go in this direction, to try to help protect our citizens as much as we can, as far as what their utility bills are going to be, and it's nothing personal against Dominion, or you, of course. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may respond to the Commissioner and to the rest of the town council, that's the great thing about being the United States of America. This is part of the process. We have filed a petition with North Carolina Utilities Commission to raise the rates, to provide you the same reliable service that we have over the last many years. What you're doing tonight is part of that American dream, and what the mayor just read is, in fact, the procedure that is going through right now with the filing that we made with the Utilities Commission, and will be so as you go through the public hearings that you'll have in Manette. So thank you for those comments.
Michael, if you'll stay up there for one second after we vote, I have one quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
The Green Initiative Act that the federal government passed a couple of years ago, Michael, that dealt with y'all having to get more...
Senate Bill 3 in the North Carolina General Assembly, is that what you're asking?
The one about where y'all were given sets amount of time where you had to meet goals of how much power came from green energy?
Yes, sir.
How are y'all coming along on that?
Dominion is doing very well. You will probably notice that we don't have much steel in the ground, as we call it, simply because Dominion is part of what is called a regional transmission organization called an RTO. The Regional Transmission Organization is made up of 13 contiguous states from North Carolina to New York and through the Midwest to Indiana, where we're able to call on an hour's notice for energy to come our way or to go their way. And generally, coming our way would be this time of year that PJM would have their independent system operator, ISO, send the energy this way. It would be in the wintertime that the energy that we have in extra capacity that we would send to them for the heating load. So Dominion, by virtue of having that through their legislative lobbyists, was able to get an exception to many of the criteria there, because we were able to cite in other states, such as Morgantown West, or, excuse me, just northeast of Morgantown, West Virginia, and Grant County, which if you look at West Virginia, as a catcher's mitt, it's up in this part of the state, we have a 150-unit wind farm that we're partners with other companies to build. We have found that the constant wind that blows down through the Ohio Valley, that was the best place to put it. Here on the coast, I don't think that the towns or the tourists would have too much agreement that they'd want to sit and look at that. That's just me speaking from my experience so far. Also, we were able to meet the other standards, Commissioner, and it's a great question you ask, through this regional transmission organization, but by virtue of that exception for Dominion and not putting steel in the ground in North Carolina, is we're able to buy solar recs, renewable energy credits, from California, even though we're not interconnected. Theoretically, you're connected, and you can move those zebra-stripe kilowatt-hours to North Carolina and meet those standards. But we are doing very well in that regard. There are some, you have the brewing station, you have Jeanette's Pier, two small examples of what can be done with generation. You have geothermal at Jeanette's Pier. Dominion was a large partner, gave a $500,000 grant for the wind turbines to happen. We also have what is called Nano 510, and Nano 510 is, if you go to the spectrum and remember your science in school, Roy G. Bibb, red, orange, yellow, green, blue, indigo, and violet, it is the color in the spectrum, and a company came down from Washington, D.C. and just east of Roanoke Rapids built a large solar farm there. We also have what is called Enviva. They have two plants. One is operational on the Husky, and the other one, to become operational in the same location is Nano 510, which they take wood waste and they make wood pellets. Dominion entered into a 15-year agreement to buy all the wood pellets that we could, and we use that as fuel where we blow into the fireball and generate electricity.
There's talk of a wind farm in Currituck County. Have y'all been in conversation with the people that are thinking about putting that wind farm in Currituck County?
Yes, sir. And as a matter of fact, we've been in conversation with at least three. There's one in Pantego, which is to the south of where we are now. There's one in Camden County, Invenergy, I-N-V-E-N-E-R-G-Y.
That's the one I'm speaking of.
And also, there's Eberdrola, a Spanish firm that wanted to locate in Pasquale Quimmins Counties. And I'll take you back to the PJM, this interconnection that we have with all these different utilities to make sure that everybody has the power that they need during the harsh times of the summer or the winter, or even in the shoulder months when the capacity may go down. And these particular groups, we have them to contact PJM, because we can't make a decision. We have to do what is called a feasibility study, whether or not it's feasible to do it, how it interacts with our system, because if you overload, as a builder, you know, Commissioner, that you have to have certain water lines and electrical lines inside a house, or you will overload them. But if somebody wants to cite a particular plant, like you're speaking of, one of those three locations, we have to make sure that our transmission lines and our substations have the ability to withstand that additional load. If they do not, then we do another study to say, okay, what do we have to build to make sure that the system doesn't clasp because it's overloaded?
Right. Okay. Well, that's good to know. Nothing else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next under new business is item number two, appointments. We have a couple of appointments to look at tonight with the Historic Landmarks Commission, and I'll ask Mayor Protim Hogan to introduce this, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Tanya Young and Chris Shea to remain on the board. They have been members of the board for some time. They wish to remain. And I would like to nominate Ted Mitchell to take the place of Patricia Broom, who is not interested at this time in being reappointed.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Let's see. Next on the agenda is Commissioner's agenda. Start with you.
I do have one thing, and I'd like to get my notes here. The 2012-13 budget was discussed at several meetings in May and in June, plus we had two budget workshops, and as you might know, y'all might know, the budget was passed at our last meeting by a 3-2 vote. And then coming into that meeting, I was under the impression that there was a clear understanding of where we were in the discussions, and that there was a majority consensus on the final draft, including the 2-cent increase. The only exception to that was that the filling of the vacant planner position, Commissioners Wood and Bruski were against filling a position, and their objection was duly noted for the There was some information that was put forward that, in my opinion, made it appear that the town is overstaffed and that we have staff positions that other towns don't have in the county, and that we may have more employees compared to other counties, compared to their populations, towns within our county and elsewhere. It was stated that the various department managers in other towns don't have assistants when, in fact, as Commissioner Reubautum pointed out, most of them do have assistants or someone who is second-in-command, so to speak. They just have different titles. As Commissioner Reubautum said, it's a matter of semantics. A, for instance, is that a position right now that is not filled in Nagseth, but just used as an illustration, is Nagseth has had in the past a deputy town manager, whereas we call ours an assistant town manager. But they're basically the same positions. And there was a few other items, too, that I think would need to be clarified. Nagseth has a population of about 3,100. I checked two sources on that, and there's nine positions in their planning and inspections department. We have a population of about 6,800, again, gotten from a couple of sources, which is more than twice the size of Nagseth. And we have eight positions in our planning department, although we've been operating with just seven people for the last several years since our planner, Shanda, moved on. And just as an aside, and this wasn't mentioned at the last meeting, but Nagseth has seven people in their finance department, and we have six and a half. That half is because people split duties between maybe either other departments or other duties that they share. They have seven, we have six and a half. They have two management information system individuals, and we have one. It was also stated that Portsmouth, Virginia, where the population of about 95,000, has 10 people in their planning and inspections department. There's actually, I think, 12 people that are listed under planning. There's also 19 people listed under inspections, which gives them a total of 31, which, if you combine those two, it mirrors our planning department here, because we have our inspections and code enforcement all included. And also, it was stated several times that, by approving the budget, that we were growing government. In fact, we have virtually the same number of employees right now as we had... of employees right now as we had 10 years ago in 2002. And matter of fact, we have one quarter less employee if you take into account that same thing about the shared duties. It was also suggested that we might cut the $400,000 from the streets budget because we've taken care of all the poor streets, when in fact, there's actually 13 streets that are still listed in the poor category. And there's also 29 streets that are listed in the fair three condition, which is the next worst rating. And some of those fair three, by now, may have fallen into the poor category since the last survey, which was pretty close to three years ago, as I recall.
One hundred and the same thing.
It was also stated at that meeting, which was the 27th of June, that our tax rate at 21 and a half cents was the highest in the county. Actually, Manio's at that time was 23 and a half cents, two cents higher. Both Manio and Kill Devil Hills have increased their taxes by two cents, and are now at 23 and a half for Kill Devil Hills and 25 and a half for Manio. And also, Derrick County has a rate of 28 cents. So I just wanted to bring that forward to clear the record that I don't want anyone to have the mistaken impression that we're overstaffed or that there's something happening here that, that would cause us to have an excessive employees where other places may not have that. But in my research, which I've done quite a bit of in the past week, I find that we are pretty much comparable to most municipalities of our size and type. And we even do better than a lot of them, as I may have illustrated here. I just wanted to make that clear for the record. Thank you.
So, you have, is it Mike?
Yeah.
Mr. Woodard?
Don't have anything.
Mr. Buskey?
I decline to comment.
Okay. Commissioner Reubautum?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Short meeting. Under Mayor's Agenda, I just have one thing to bring up, and we all received an email regarding a concern citizen relating to noise. I think we all did, maybe not. It was John Powers. John Powers. Do you remember that email? Okay. Basically, it was bringing up concerns about just how loud it is over, this is on the Beach Road near Mexicali Blues near. So anyway, I know we have discussed this. We all say this is an agenda item that, or an item that was looked at months and months ago with the, with the previous board. Just wanted to see, I think Steve and I spoke briefly today, and to be able to prepare response for Mr. Powers, I was hoping we could have this as an agenda item at our next meeting and possibly look at a revised draft of the ordinance that was started months ago.
Yes, ma'am. We do have plans to have that on the, excuse me, on the agenda for the August meeting. And also, I will share with you that Mary has had an opportunity to speak with Mr., it's Powers, I'm sorry, it's the Powers, yeah. She spoke with him last week and assured him that it wasn't something that was not being looked into and that our plans were to have that on the August, first meeting in August agenda.
Great. Thank you.
Can I, am I mistaken? Didn't we talk about another business that was very similar to this, that was in a resident, I mean, that was near residential section?
Well, this item was brought up, I remember back when I was a citizen, back probably in October, by a citizen who was having issues with the dumpster noise behind McDonald's.
Yeah, I'm talking, I'm talking about the pit.
Since then? That was brought up, was that during one of the work sessions, maybe one of the budget work sessions?
Was that what it was? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because it seemed to me that, that had been pretty recent and it was-
Yes, that's when that was brought up. So basically, it's a repeat issue and we need to-
And that's all gonna be, okay.
We can address all of that at the time that we look at what our ordinance is and-
Because that would, because that would also be the same thing, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have one comment to make before we move on. In all due respect, Mike, I can understand your comments. A lot of what you brought up tonight, we talked about last week, but just to clarify one, well, two items, actually. One, growing government does not only mean growing in staff. Growing government means growing in money as well. It's not staff only. So there's more than one kind of growth. So let's get that straight. That's not just people, that's money as well. And I know we did a lot of comparison between the staff that we have in Kittle Hill and the staff that we have in other towns, which may be a good comparison, may not. But I know in my business, I operate with two people. There are construction companies smaller than mine, same size as mine, that operate with five and six people. So just because you're comparative in size does not mean that you got to be comparative in staff.
Okay, Paul. Thank you. Point taken.
Okay. Is there anything else before we move to, I guess, the next?
One, one thing, Mayor, if you brought up noise, there was another issue with a citizen with respects to the activity going on in Avalon and also the crossworks. I have not seen, and I mentioned it the last meeting, could we respond to that citizen? But I've not seen anything in writing that we've responded to that citizen.
I signed the letter tonight. It'll go in the mail tomorrow. So the letter was prepared. It was ready last Tuesday, and then it was the holiday that I've traveled to, out of town, so.
Good. As long as we respond to it, great.
And Mary, do you mind making a copy so we can email that out tomorrow to the other commissioners so they can see what's going out as well? But we did address all of those issues.
Great.
Okay. Next agenda item is the town manager's agenda.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Town attorney's agenda?
I do have a matter we'll need to go into closed session. Or do you want to wait and do that at the end?
Let's do that. Yes, we'll wait. Okay. So consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Just one item on the consent agenda this evening, and that's the minutes from the June 27, 2012 Board of Commissioners meeting. Staff would recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Next is the second time set aside this evening for public comment. If there's anyone, yes, that wishes to speak, I'll call on you after. Welcome, Jill.
Hello. My name is Jill Morton. I'm the Human Resources Manager for Lowe's, 1500 North Corotan Highway. I just wanted to thank everyone, in particular, the Police Department and Fire Department. On July 4, we hosted a blood drive with a red cross for four hours in front of the store, and the bus was full the whole time. And even though it was ni- in the upper 90s, we had people waiting outside to get onto the bus. So within that four-hour timeframe, we ended up having 37 units of blood that was able to be donated right here to the Outer Banks Hospital. So there were several off-duty officers from the Police Department and Fire Department that came through, so I just wanted to thank you all.
Great. And thank you for sharing that update. That's great. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hey, Kevin.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Kevin Cherry. I'm the owner of Mexicali Brews, who we just brought up a little while ago. Mr. Powers has not contacted me about any kind of a noise complaint. Last time someone has contacted me about noise with my business, I addressed it immediately, stopped all the bands from outside, put anything with noise inside for the most part. I do try to hold a single acoustical act outside during the afternoons. I don't do anything outside late night. I think the day that he drafted his email, it was a, there was a hiccup in the situation. I'd hired a new bar manager and she had, had putting a band outside with drums. I do not like drums outside. I don't think anybody likes drums outside. I'm here to work with the town, work with the situation, and not try to be a pain in y'all's side. Okay? With that also being said, I have lots of customers who want to enjoy the outside and live music outside. If we can find some way we can work together to give our customers and our tourists the Outer Banks outside experience, if you will. I think that'd be a good idea. People want to sit outside. People want to have a good time. Being inside when you're at the beach isn't all that much fun. Let's talk about this past week, but still. With that, I mean, if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to ask, answer.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for being here, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak? Okay. That being said, we'll move to response to public comment.
I'll just say, I understand. I mean, I kind of chuckled a little bit. I just, it seems like that's always the way something like that happens, is that it's, and it's understandable that that's, that something like that could happen. And unfortunately, that's, that's what brings about stuff like this. But it, but that's not the only issue as we were talking about before. That's not the only issue. And I think what, what we would probably come up with, I think, is something that, that would be fair and equitable all the way around. So we're not looking at trying to, you know, shut everything down completely because it's, I haven't been there personally, but if I had time and didn't have an eight-year-old, that looks like a place I'd really like to go and have fun because it, it does look like a place that you would, you know, and that tourists would really be drawn to, so.
If I may, I'm hoping this September to hold something with like Laura Marqueira Jazz Night outside, invite local, the local people to come through and try our food for prey and things of that nature. But I would have to figure out some way to be able to get the music outside so people can enjoy the cool weather outside. I mean, I kind of see where I'm going with this. I want it to be family-friendly and also, again, trying to make a dollar for myself. It is all about a business.
Yeah. And I don't know if there's any way if we could like work in maybe like a one-time special permit or some kind of-
I was gonna say, Meredith might be able to speak. There are applications for events, right?
There are, but they're, they're for charitable events unless they're in the off-season. And in the off-season, the vendors don't have to be charitable, but the event itself still does, so.
Supports a charitable event.
Only two charitable events a year.
Yeah. So if it's a charitable event, they would work with Donna Elliott, Arizona Administrator, to get that approved. And, and they would have to provide details, and they would also be working with the Police Department, because Donna sends all the applications through the Police Department for their review and approval, too. So that would be something that we would do.
Okay.
I think, Kevin, if Mexicali Brews had been a problem, we would have seen you a long time ago. So I think you're doing all right.
And also, like I say, I work a lot with police officers around here, with Dana especially. And I want to say that you do a great job.
Thank you.
You really do. No one really talks about it. I see you on the website, people talking a lot of trash about our police force down here. They do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I guess we need to have a motion to go into closed session. We will come back out of closed session before we adjourn the meeting, so you're welcome to stay around. But go ahead and, is there a motion to move into closed session?
I'd like to make a motion, please. I make a motion for the Board of Commissioners to enter a closed session in accordance with the provisions of NC General Statute 143-318.11 parentheses A, parentheses 3, to consult with the town attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as it relates to giving the town attorney instructions concerning the handling or settlement of a claim, judicial action, arbitration, or administrative procedure.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
He wrote that for me.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Oh, you had to memorize it.
Mary wrote it for me.
Okay. I'd like to call for a motion to return to the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I couldn't do it.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. The board is returning from closed session, and in accordance with provisions NCGS 143-318.11A3, we provided direction to the attorney concerning the handling or settlement of a claim, judicial action, arbitration, or administrative procedure. And we don't have any further business. So if anyone, does anyone have anything else they would like to bring up before the board?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.